Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order. The first order of business, if you'd stand if you're able, and join me in the Pledgeable Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everybody. Next item up on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone here wish to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. Discussion items? Mr. McCott, how are you today, Owen?
How are you?
Good night.
Thank you. The Student Council went to Wareham High School last Thursday for the CMAS Winter Conference with workshops presented by MHS alum Michael Durico as well as CMAS Clubmaster Josh Diamond. Congratulations to Madison Roberts, Bridget Lynch, Mike O'Shaughnessy, Jada Cochran, Nick Ramos, Shay Gallagher, Abby Wager, Evan Gavush, Jeremy Soul, Colin O'Brien, Harrison Lapierre, and Brandon Hogan for being named Brockton Enterprise All Scholarastic Athletes in their respective fall sports. Finals have been moved to the 25th and 26th of January, next Thursday and next Friday respectively, and Semester Two will begin the following Monday. The scheduling portal is now open for students to select their classes for the 2018-2019 school year. This week is being celebrated as No Name Calling Week by the GSA with a Spirit Week and opportunities to donate to the GLSEN. And the Winter Spirit Week this year is being revised into two separate weeks, with Winter Ball taking place in the middle on the 3rd of February, and the Student Council Lock-In will take place on February 10th and 11th. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Does anyone have any questions for Owen? As always, Owen, we appreciate everything that you do for us. Any member of the committee have everything they'd like to bring up? Mr. Stevens?
All right. So, we did, went to the high school with my daughter who is entering 9th grade next year, and we had the curriculum, the presentation that was really impressive how many programs, I mean, it really does look well when it's, you know, you see it all together in one presentation. It was a nice night.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I couldn't agree more when someone once said, "We need to find out why kids aren't, are leaving Middleborough High, you know, before high school." I think the real question is, is why aren't they staying? Because, man, what offerings there are at Middleborough High School, from APs to different programs, the Jim Bragg Business Program pathways. There's just so many offerings and potentially some new ones coming up very soon. So, I sit there and I watch it and I say, "Why would anyone go anywhere else?" So, I think it's pretty awesome. It was a great program of studies night that they held the other night. I got a couple of items.
Sure.
There's a couple informational items I wanted to mention right at the beginning of the meeting. The Ice Hockey Comedy Night fundraiser for Middleborough Ice Hockey is February 2nd at 7:00 PM. I believe that's being held at the-
Middleboro Elks.
Middleboro Elks. Great fundraiser for, that helps support the hockey and getting ice time, et cetera. And then also Masba, the Middleboro All Sports Boosters Association, is holding their annual mattress sale on February 10th, that Saturday, February 10th. So, come on down, take a look around, buy a mattress, lay down, buy a mattress. It's a great opportunity, and that's February 10th. But I wanted to make mention at the beginning of the meeting for those who need a mattress or think about it, and I'm in the market myself, so I'm going to hold off for another few weeks. Thank you.
And I would also point out, based on the mattress sale, I believe Middleborough gets credit for anyone who walks in the door. So, even if you're not going to, if you don't have no intention to buy a mattress, if you would walk in the door that day, it would help out Masba and they get credit for people. So, I think that's important to note, too. Anybody else?
I'm looking for a comfortable place for a nap.
Yeah, absolutely. I do want to bring up one thing, just so everyone understands in the community. Obviously, we didn't have a meeting at the beginning of January because of the snowstorm. For those who watched our second meeting in December, they saw that Mo Franco had resigned. Her resignation date was effective the end of December. But what I wanted to say was, we are not going to fill her position because it comes so close to the town election. We would have to, for example, I couldn't publicly announce it until tonight. I'd have to give a month's notice for somebody to be able to apply. That application period would take us to School Vacation Week. We, after that, we don't meet until the first week in March, which would be just four weeks away from the town election. So, it made sense in my conversation with the town clerk not to hold, not to ask for resumes and to do it that way. But if people are interested, there'll be two three-year positions on the school committee up and one one-year position on the school committee up, and that will take the end of Mrs. Franco's term. So, I just wanted people to know that. Mr. Stevens?
Having done this before, I think you have to, when you pull papers, you have to specify which one you're running for. You don't run for all of them, you're running for the one year or the pair of three years.
Yes, absolutely. And so, this, myself and Mr. Rowe are up, as we said when Mr. Rowe was appointed. And so, just to let people know that. So, thank you. Mr. Catino?
Good evening. Interesting, snow day pushed our, at the high school, the end of the semester by just one day. It actually kind of made sense for us when we were actually looking at it. On average, we usually have a snow day before then. Why we didn't just push it to the Friday anyway, some of the teachers were like, wondering about that. But, coming up to the end of the first semester, major exams. For me, I've got a lot of seniors, so senioritis is in full swing. They're just looking forward to getting out, so, other than that, I have nothing. If anybody has any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Catino. We appreciate it.
All right.
The only thing I want to mention for recognition, is it Mr. Fine? Am I saying the name correctly?
John Fine.
John Fine. John Fine is the owner of Pop Tops in Easton. And I would like to point out to committee, the superintendent and I will have Mr. Fine come. When the football team made their Super Bowl run, Mr. Fine put together the towels and T-shirts after they had won that said "Super Bowl Championship." At the Masba meeting Monday night, he gave Masba a check for $4,500. So, I just wanted people to know about that, especially in the community. Again, Mr. Fine owns Pop Tops, and we will have him come into the, before the committee with, of course, my favorite, the big check. So, I did want people to know about that.
Mr. Chair, through you also, we also had a donation from Fisher Enterprises and Fisher's Pub. They had a set of cornhole boards that they were raffling off, and they also made a donation of $2,000 to Masba and the high school, oh, the Middleborough Athletic Program. I'm not going to say "high school athletic program," and Mr. Sylvia corrects me on that now. He wants to make sure that we know that the athletic program includes the Nichols Middle School and the high school. So, just another great donation from a great town contributor, David Fisher, his wife Tina, and Fisher Enterprises. So, thank you very much.
That's one of many donations Mr. Fisher makes to the school in general. Anytime the school has anything, he's usually the first one to donate, gift certificate and everything like that. So, although it's $2,000 for that particular piece, that's not the only donation he gives us, and I want the community to know that. Next up on our agenda is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience. This evening, we have a couple of items here on the docket, which include the high school. So, I would invite Mr. Paul Brandigan to come on down. This, as you know, was on the agenda for the last school committee meeting, and his program of studies that he's been discussing with parents and students has been pending school committee approval, and everyone understood that. And Mr. Brandigan certainly wants your approval for his program. He wants to explain it to you, so he's here this evening. Thank you, Mr. Brandigan, for coming. Appreciate that. And then after that, this is the discussion of the scholarship booklet, so that will move on from there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lynch, and thank you to the committee for your flexibility in allowing a pending document to begin the process of at least engaging our students in the scheduling process for next year. So, I just wanted to make sure I thanked you for that. It is really with great pleasure to share with you the 2018-19 program of studies and the addendum document that you received, the updated one. This really has been a work in progress in that, as you were receiving information right after the holidays, it really was something that we were still finessing that document, so, which is why, the reason why you got that second document that gave some nuances of just some final pieces to the puzzle. The, I just want to take a moment and thank the members of the, just some people who were very, very instrumental in the creation of this document. I think one of the most important documents that a high school can provide is a program of studies because I think it really tells a story of exactly what a school offers. And to make sure the fact that the information that's provided is current and that we take a lot of time to make sure we go through that document to make sure that it's updated as best as we can. I just want to make sure that the community notices the numbers, number of students whose artwork is throughout this document, which is an important element that we just want to make sure we provide. The accreditation statement, which is in the document, it's an important piece that I just want to make sure every year that you know as a committee and that this community knows, that that's an important document to make sure the fact that we are a fully accredited high school, and you can tell that through the program of studies that you see. So, that's the reason why that we have that. And also, our core values and our beliefs and our learning expectation is woven through the document. You are going to notice one major element that has changed, is that in the prior documents, you would see adopted rubrics, or excuse me, adopted expectations that were throughout the document. So, a math department would have expectations and so on. That has all been eliminated because now we're at school where those learning expectations are woven throughout every aspect of the school and not just concentrated one area of the building. The essential question, this is really that, this is our guiding question. You will see this in, woven through this document, our Accountability Plan. It has been shared with the school council as well. Really, how is it that we provide the instructional resources and personalized instruction to allow all students to acquire, hone, demonstrate, and transfer the skills they need in order to be college and career-ready? And we really do hope that you will see in the newest additions to the program of studies for this year, that it really is an opportunity for us to attempt to keep answering that question. District Improvement Plan, you will notice just the underpinnings of the improvement plan for continuous improvement is also identified in this document. We thought it was an important element to make sure that it's connected to our course of studies. The program, the Schoolwide Learning Expectations, this is the, these are the seven expectations that guide our school, and we thought it was, again, an important element that is connected throughout the entire document as well as, in terms of actually just the front part of the book. What I asked all of the departments to do as we began this journey back in the mid-fol is I asked them to go through every aspect of their courses. So, the typical courses that are core areas are world history, the Algebra I, the biology, ones that typically don't change. And I wanted them to go through the document and make sure the fact that what we are saying is truly in a 21st century approach. So, you're going to notice the fact that in many areas of the document that we've done a lot of updating and making sure the fact that we're really speaking 21st century. The Community Service Requirement, as you know, we launched it this year with the, oh, last year, excuse me, with the class of 2020. It will continue. We decided to maintain the 24-hour, 24 hours of required service work over their four years. And the reasoning for that is, is we feel that every year we keep adding it. We want to make sure that we're calibrating ourselves correctly, that we're not taking on more than we can handle. So, with Mrs. McGurk, as you know, a few weeks ago, she was here sharing with you the growth of this program. We feel, once we add in the class of 2023, we'll be able to really start looking at the analysis of, is it appropriate to be adding on more hours for our students and are they capable of doing that? And are we able to make sure we're tracking it to show the integrity of the program? And you'll notice the fact that this learned leans itself right up against Learning Expectation Number Seven, the demonstrate the value of service and welfare to the community. Also, a year ago, I came to you about the archive project for the class of 2021. And the archive project is really our interpretation of how to engage students in the 21st century learning expectations. Where our students starting in the 9th grade will begin to create their archive, where they will be collecting pieces of evidence through their four-year journey at Middleborough High School of how they are a 21st century learner and how they prepare to take themselves into the next step of their lives. This archive project, which we started just this semester, just a few months ago, with our 9th graders, they're doing everything in Google, where they will begin to create their pieces of evidence to tell their story. And the idea is, when they become seniors in high school, they will showcase how they are a 21st century learner stepping out into the world. We will continue that with your approval with the class of 2022. Just as always, it's important to note that we've maintained our 136 credits for graduation. Also, you'll notice the updated for the 2018-19 school year. We do maintain the math requirement for senior year, and really, it's a four-year math requirement because we need to ensure the fact that every single senior walking out our door who has any intention of going to a four-year institution, they must show a math course in senior year. We know that we're following MasCor because if you look at our students who do engage in math, they're doubling up many times in their math in the course of a year because of our semesters. But we need to ensure that that 12th grade math is there, and you'll notice the fact that that's in the program of studies. And we do, I think our guidance staff does a very good job of ensuring the fact that every one of their students is in that 12th grade math if they are going to that four-year institution or planning it. Mr. Young?
If I could say one thing-
Please.
Especially for, for students that are gifted in math, who take a lot of math early, they need to take that math their senior year. This is a piece that, as you know, becomes contentious for people. "I took six classes of math, two a year, and all of a sudden, why do I need to take one the fourth year?" But I also wanted to mention, too, that especially for those gifted students, they can also take, they can also go take the college courses that we allow, and that math will count towards that, too.
Yes, indeed. Yes, indeed. The Massa Sawyer program counts as part of that. And you'll see those asterisks for when students or in families are going through that document, they'll notice what would count as their 12th grade math. And we were really strategic of why we did not make it a full requirement for every single senior to take that fourth year of math. And the reasoning for that is, is that you do, in schools that we research, when the Department of Higher Education kind of put out this policy, we did some research without a schools were doing. And the schools that had made it a full-year requirement that everybody had to do it, they really regretted that decision because you were making students who had no intention of going on to a four-year institution, forcing them into that experience. So, I think the protocol that we have together right now is actually a much better one because we are allowing students to have the flexibility of maybe engaging in a Massa Sawyer program to take a financial literacy course. So, they are engaging in that fourth year experience, but it's not forcing everybody to be in a pre-calculus or in a statistics class, even though many of ours, our college-bound students would be engaged in those experiences. So, just to engage in that.
Mr. Chair, if I might. A great example of this, I think, is the class of 2016. We had a very talented young lady who was our valedictorian and who chose not to take a math test, a math course, her senior year because she had covered her requirements and was not allowed into the UMass Honors Program because UMass requires a senior year or a fourth year of mathematics or a senior year of mathematics at the high school level. So, our top student, top SAT scores, number one, was not allowed into a state institution Honors Program because of that math requirement. So, this was sort of a little bit of a response to that over the years, correct?
That's right. And I'll even take it a step further. That same person was waitlisted at UMass Amherst because of that fourth year of math. And because the class of 2016 was the first class with that new policy, she was lucky enough to be somewhat grandfathered in to that program. If you were to now take that same student and put her in the class of 2018 and beyond, there would not be potentially a waitlist. It would be a rejection. So, it is really vital for us to make sure that we're doing our due diligence of making sure those students are taking that fourth year of math, but that's a perfect example of that. Just really, our new, our changes for this year. In English, we removed two courses, really just out of just the point of really, what are we doing? Why are we doing it? And really, what does it serve? One of our Grade 12 electives, as you know, is a committee, that, two years ago, I came to you that we really revamped our senior English program and really made it much more experiential of something they would see in a college level, of a sports and literature, psychology and literature, rather than just simply saying senior English. So, one of the courses that we had created years ago was this Theories of Violence on American Culture, and it just has been something where students are not engaged with it. So, we decided, let's not keep it into our program. Let's take it out and let's really make sure that we're keeping a vibrancy in our program that we're offering. And also, there was an elective that we ran based upon a teacher who was with us at the time. Once that teacher moved on, it became a program that we really just didn't have the interest from students, nor did we have the interest of staff to maintain it. So, that elective Irish Literature and Culture has been eliminated or will be, pending your approval. In Mathematics, there was a course that we had offered that we tried to bring back, and it just, when the math department came together with Dr. Gates, it just didn't seem to be a course that needed to maintain itself with all the things that they're offering. So, the Discrete Mathematics course was removed. However, what I was quite excited by was the SAT Math Review Course. It's been added for Grade 11. There was some real requests from families and from students about really looking at that SAT and offering an opportunity for juniors to be able to engage in an elective where they could get a little bit of a jumpstart on that SAT course.
Could you just talk a little bit about how, how a new course is developed and how it's chosen?
Sure. That's a, absolutely. For any new course that the, in the fol, our department chairs begin their process of evaluating their scope and sequence and their programming. And then I ask everybody to go back and look at the programs they're offering. Why are we offering it? What is the rationale? And really, are there courses that we are running that really are just not really as interesting anymore? Or they've no longer as relevant as potentially another course that could be added into their content? So, in this particular case, that everybody has gone through to really do some things, and you'll notice the fact that there are courses that really we are transitioning into another one. So, it's not really about just getting rid of something with nothing to replace it. It's really about, are we really offering what we should be to an array of students? Or is a course like maybe Discrete Mathematics, is that really a course for all? And that really, as we are looking at an elective program, we want to make sure that it's something that else students can engage with, where the SAT Review Course is much more of a, of an elective that more students may say, "You know what? I want to take that," or it's an opportunity for me to engage in as well. And then they basically go through a process with me. We go, as a leadership team, we go through the courses that we're offering, deleting, changing, and then basically, we do the vetting process to make sure that it adds itself into the book as well. So, History and Social Studies, a course that we were offering for a few years, our Into the West course, has been evolved into our Human Geography program. You're going to notice the fact that there is a goal in the future of really bringing in an advanced placement human geography. The History Department has made a cause, really looking at how we're engaged in geography, and this is a good opportunity for us to be able to look at how we interact with our planet. And really, with the human geography piece, it's going to be done as an elective, offering to grades 10, 11, and 12 to begin the, to begin the program and to begin really looking at that study. And the hope is, in the future, you'll notice the caveat is that it will hopefully evolve into an opportunity for students to be able to take it as an elective of AP Geography and then be able to, excuse me, as, human geography is an elective, to then be able to evolve themselves into the AP Human Geography. You'll also notice, it's been many years coming, but we were finally able to make it happen of launching an Advanced Placement Psychology program. And we're mirroring the human geography, really based upon what we do, what our goal is with AP Psych. We currently, right now, run a very, very popular psychology program in the History Department. And the idea is that our students would still be engaged in that elective as kind of the prep course for it and to get their feet wet with it, and then be able to transition into the AP Psychology program in either grades 11 or 12.
Paul, could you just talk briefly about what will happen this summer with the two, the one or two teachers who are going to teach that course?
Right. So, Mrs. Mae Beaton is going to be the teacher for AP Psychology. And last summer, we had the good fortune of sending her to St. Johnsberry in Vermont to do the training. So, what we've started to do is, we never launch an AP course the year of the training. With the exception of seminar and research, that was the one thing that we needed to kind of do the training, knowing we were going to be launching. But in all the others, what I'd like to try to do with the AP teachers, give them the training, give them the year to really build their curriculum, do the syllabus they need to do, submit it into the College Board. So, her training that she did in summer of 2017 would allow us to create the launch of AP Psychology for the fall of '18 and beyond. So, so, Mrs. Mae Beaton is quite excited by the potential of being able to teach that course. Science and Pre-Engineering, you'll notice the fact that we had, again, did some real analysis of our programming, and the department decided to eliminate the chemistry too organic just because of enrollment numbers. And really, could we take a teacher who'd be teaching that and really offer another opportunity as well? What I would like to do is invite Dr. Gates to join me because it is with really great excitement of the potential of two very new programs for Middleborough High School in a grant that Melanie has been instrumental in bringing to us of the Project Lead the Way. You'll notice there are two courses that are being offered to our, to our incoming 9th grade, Principles of Biomedical Science and an Introduction to Engineering Design. And I thought it would be really, really a wonderful opportunity for Melanie to share really what this grant is, if we get it. And right now, the hope is, is that with your approval, that the students are starting, beginning to potentially sign up for this course. And if it goes, then we'll be able to launch it. If we don't get the grant, then we don't launch those courses, of course. But I wanted to be able to share with you kind of what the trajectory is. Before I hand over to Melanie, it's an important chapter for us with this because in all of our content areas, we're beginning to have the conversation about our program of studies in a new high school and what will that look like? Because it is the goal to make sure that when we move into that building, that we're ready to use it, and we're not waiting a few years to say, "How do we even navigate a building that's, that's a state-of-the-art school?" So, we want to make sure, and this would be the really launch pad for us, to begin really looking at how can we engage students very, very differently in our core content areas in a very, very different look and building. So, with that said, I want to share with you the trajectory of the two programs that we're applying for, and if Melanie could take over to share a little bit about the nuances of the programs.
Thank you, Mr. Brandigan. Thank you, school committee, for the opportunity to share about this exciting program that we hope to earn the grants for, that being a biomedical science pathway as well as an engineering pathway through Project Lead the Way. Project Lead the Way is a, is a national organization. They've been around for quite a few years now, and it just seemed like the perfect opportunity for Middleborough High School to engage in such rigorous curriculum as what Project Lead the Way offers. We've always seen a large number of students interested in STEM pathways. We see a lot of kids pursuing medicine, pursuing engineering. And we think it's a great time for us to revamp our curriculum, revamp our strategies for how we engage students in preparation for our new high school, but also just for what we need to do for what's in the best interest of our students. So, these courses are grant-dependent. The grant's due tomorrow at 11:59 PM. It's pretty much all done. I want the opportunity to review it with Superintendent Lynch and Mr. Brandigan as well as our Science and Technology Department Head, Mr. Kurt Wrench. I'd like to thank Mr. Giavononi for a letter of support that he offered toward the grant. Each pathway has its own grant application, and you needed to have a letter of support from someone, either an organization in the field or a local workforce board. I was able to get a letter of support for the Biomedical Science Program from the South Shore Workforce Development Board, and Mr. Giavononi kindly, kindly offered a letter of support for the engineering pathway and explaining how our local area does have a labor demand for such careers. So, thank you for that letter. It was very well-written and very much appreciated. But the two pathways that we have will all, each offers a four-course sequence where students would be taking one course each year. The course would only be open to our incoming freshmen for each of the introductory courses, that being Principles of Biomedical Science and Introduction to Engineering Design. Our reasoning for opening it only to the incoming freshman classes, we hope to create a cohort model where these students will transition from year to year through these courses as a team. This was something that was highly advised by our friends in the Plymouth Public Schools who are in their third year of implementation with the Biomedical Science Program. And they just found that by creating that cohort model with the students, it helps them persevere through these courses because the curriculum is challenging. So, our hope is that with each year, we would add an additional course, as you can see, projected here. One of the additional benefits to this pathway is also the opportunity for our students as well as our school to receive recognition for our student success within Project Lead the Way as well as within Advanced Placement. Students can receive recognition if they take three courses between Advanced Placement and Project Lead the Way, and these courses need to be in a specific vein. So, for example, if I'm a student interested in biomedical science and I wish to receive recognition for my work within biomedical science, I would need to take either AP Biology or AP Chemistry and one or two of the Project Lead the Way courses within that strand. A total of three courses need to be taken between AP and Project Lead the Way, and students need to earn a qualifying score, which is a score of three or higher on the Advanced Placement exam, as well as demonstrate proficiency on the end-of-course assessment, which is a required component of Project Lead the Way. The student would need to demonstrate proficiency on that end-of-course assessment. But it's another opportunity for our students to demonstrate their academic abilities in the STEM field and further enrich their applications for college. Schools can also receive recognition, and Project Lead the Way has yet to divulge what those, the criteria would be for a school receiving recognition, but it's not so much about our schools receiving the recognition as it is for our students.
Questions to Melanie?
Fantastic. Thank you very, very much for doing this. Great.
Great.
When do we find out? After you apply?
I think the turnaround time's going to be pretty short, because as part of submitting the grant, which, I should just clarify, it's a, it's a two-step grant process. We wrote an initial application, and we're invited into the second round of the process. They do not have a specific date for when they will inform us, but as part of writing our application, we are to identify champions of the program, and the champions of the program need to attend the grant convening on March 8th. So, I assume we shall find out sometime prior to that. Hopefully soon, because I'm, I'm pretty anxious about this. I'm, I'm very hopeful that we have a strong application to earn this opportunity for our students. If the grant application is not successful for some reason, I'm not going to give up on this. I'll certainly come back to the drawing board with the support of Mr. Brannigan and our central office team to find some way to make this happen, because I think it's going to be something extremely beneficial for our students, and just something that will fuel their fires to pursue STEM-based careers and majors.
And just as a, as an additional piece that, part of the grant application that was written, we talked a lot about the Center for Innovative Studies in the school, and really just the compliment that these programs would allow for us to be able to engage students in, in really a much more complex and rigorous and really very 21st century approaches to really teaching of STEM. So we're really quite excited by it and its potential.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to members of the committee. This is a competitive grant, and, and there are a lot of competitive grants out there. And I want to basically compliment Dr. Melanie Gates for this, going through this application process, putting in the extra work to get this done. Been successful in the past, swung and missed a couple of times, there's no doubt about it with grants, but she's not afraid to get right back in the game and, and apply for these things when she thinks they're meaningful for the Middleborough Public Schools, and I think that she is to be publicly commended, and I thank you, Melanie, Dr. Gates, and thank you for all your efforts.
I, I think this program is just phenomenal. As I mentioned in my letter, I went to Northeast and we had a co-op program, hands-on, and this, I, I envision this all being a hands-on type item that's going to find its way into the maker space in the new school. And I, I just can see it, as I get chills just talking about it, as we were sitting September 19th, a year and a half ago, over at the, over at the Boston Tavern, talking about things. This is what we were talking about. And I have parents constantly saying, well, why don't we offer this, and why don't we offer that? And I say, well, that's what Bristol Plymouth is. We offer something else, too. This is what we're, this is what we need to offer our students. And I, I also mentioned how, even in the middle school, the, the STEM is being pushed really well here. This is the next piece, and I, I just envision a, a train of new engineers, as an engineer myself, and both men and women, because there aren't a lot of women. I see it day in and day out in my field, out there. And so many women I know just don't even think of becoming an engineer, because that's not, that's a guy's thing. Well, it isn't. It's a, it's a person who wants to do the work and, and work hard, that's what it is. So I'm so excited for this, one way or another. This is exactly what we need, moving in, starting now, and moving right into that new space.
I also want to add, in my mind, the importance here is that these are courses that we don't offer, that lots of kids go into their field. And I think it's important to note that when they go into those fields, they start in college, because they think they want these courses. And then some of them decide they're not for them. And so I think it's important that it works both sides, which is some, you're encouraging people to become engineers in bi, in the biomedical science, and some to say, does that really work for me or not? You know, maybe I'll look at something else, but at least you're trying it and seeing the pieces that you move forward with. And I think that's fantastic for both sides.
I could just add one disclaimer. With the biomedical science program, just in, in case we've got a great audience out there, as I'm sure we do, with the biomedical science program, and it's not just biomedical science, such pathway would be suitable for students interested in forensics. For example, the Principles of Biomedical Science course, it's generally described as students engaging in activities like dissecting a sheep heart. Students will explore concepts of biology and medicine to determine factors that led to the death of a fictional person. When we visited Plymouth South and Plymouth North, we got to, to see this course in action, and the students actually entered onto a crime scene, analyzed the scene, collected evidence, and then throughout the course of the program, they analyzed the evidence, and they have to come up with their own conclusions as to why did this person die? And I overheard students in the class talking about, well, we collected vomit and analyzed the vomit, and from that, we determined that this person was actually diabetic. They found the person face down on the floor, almost looking like they could have died from having, going into like diabetic shock or something. And kids talking about this, and talking about the data, using the medical terminology, the scientific terms, and I'm just like, that's just going to be perfect for Middleborough High School, and perfect to help encourage our students for fields such as forensics, medicine, health, biology, et cetera. So it's not just for kids interested in biomedical science, I think really any field in science, this program would be great for them.
Melanie, thank you so much. Thank you. Onto foreign language, just, I want to make sure that all the content areas representative, represented. We, the foreign language department, as always, just they do their review, and the Level Two program had a significant amount of updating and making sure the fact that the transition from that first level into the second year of their, of Spanish, French, or Russian are complementary to each other. So the pathways of those students, depending upon what language they're taking, that there's a complement of each. Computer tech, sorry, Mr. Lynch.
I hate to interrupt again, but through you. We just had a family move into town recently, and they basically went through Massachusetts trying to find a program that had Russian in their high school. They found two high schools in Massachusetts, and they have settled on a home on Whitetail Lane in Middleborough because of the Russian program, and have been very impressed with Mr. Michael and the Russian program. So, that just complements to somebody that did sort of a worldwide search from Russia. Person was, worked in Russia at the time, and was coming back home, moving back home, and taking a job and, and shopped for a community that had a Russian program. So just a little inside there.
As mentioned in our program of studies, you actually mentioned, there's 50,000 public schools in America, 70, seven zero, have a Russian program. Four in Massachusetts, two private schools, very private schools, and then two public schools only. I was shocked by it, and I, I just can't understand why more schools wouldn't, because the points that he made at the program of studies is true, that this language is one that we better start to understand for our own benefits.
We have a Middleborough High School graduate who was a undersecretary of state for Condoleezza Rice in the Bush administration, because he had a background in Russian and went on to MIT and furthered his education in Russian. And I've known a lot of people who've furthered their education in Russian with the Middleborough High School Spring Board. So I, I think it's an important program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. In computer technology, we just did some redesign of a mandatory course for all ninth graders. The Technology Integration to Support 21st Century Life Skills has been redesigned and revamped, and it's now called the Computer Programming and Design Essentials. So it's just really taking really where our students are at, and really what is it that we need to make sure that they have entering high school, but really that engagement of technology. So it's just been really kind of updated and made sure that it's really much more current. And that's mandatory for all ninth graders, or at some point during their journey, but we try to ensure that all ninth graders in their scheduling have that course or will have that course. In the visual arts, two new courses are being offered, comic book art, which is very popular. There's an art club that has been started at the high school, and that is an area that they were finding to have a lot of interest. So comic book art will be one, as well as beyond the selfies. So they're going to be doing some self-portraits, and that's kind of the whole focus of the class. Art Foundations is a prereq, which is an important element to make sure the fact that students who are going into those courses, they understand the demand of those courses. So that's the reason why, that I want to make sure you understood that prereq, that it's a little bit of a higher-level experience of our art students than more of the survey courses than that we offer as well. Theater, Mrs. Duggan constantly building the program, a new course, Writing, Playmaking, and Designing, devising for stage and screen. Really, the art of theater, which is the fundamental course they take for that entry level, is really just making sure that student couldn't go in and take that course unless they took that first-level course of theater. So we're hoping that that will be a nice complement to the program that Mrs. Duggan has. Obviously, the pathway to business is continuing, thanks to the partnership with Massasoia and the Middleborough Public Schools, as well as, of course, the Braga family. You'll notice the four courses that are there. Basically, what we do is we offer all of them, and we see really where the feet go in terms of where students are interested. And then what we do is work with Massasoia to make sure the fact that we can keep that evolution of the courses going, so that students who truly are entering that pathway would fundamentally be able to take all four of those courses. So we don't want to limit, so we leave all of them open and see where those feet take us, and then begin to repopulate the courses as needed. And lastly, just some of this has been updated. Thank you for your flexibility. We were able to do the program of studies tonight on Tuesday. We were able to open the portal for scheduling on, on January 13th. It will close on January 26th, and then we will assess actually how many students we still have left. And sometimes we've been able to reopen it again to make sure that we're getting all of our students in. And then lastly, the scheduling support that's happening now, our guidance department is in the cafeteria all this week, working with students to go over their schedules and to help them navigate some of their selections. We've been telling the students there isn't a schedule yet, all they're merely doing is selecting the courses they have an interest in for next year. And, and that's really the, the major changes or updates of that book, and I'll entertain any questions or comments you may have.
I've seen it, it would be, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the program of studies.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the program of studies for the 2018, 2019 Middleborough High School.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. I do want to say the, the same thing I say every single time the program of studies comes up. When we sit here as school committee members, in my mind, the life of a high school is not about MCAS scores, is not about athletics, it's about this book. And when choosing your child's high school, look at what opportunities they will have academically first and foremost. And, and I, I am so honored that we are building a brand-new high school, and we're going to have brand-new facilities. But they mean nothing if we can't give kids what they need inside of that brand-new building. And that comes from the great faculty that we have and this program of studies. And, you know, looking at, they were constantly adding AP courses, and those AP courses translate into kids' opportunity. I'll say it again. My daughter started college this September as a sophomore in college, because she had a year, because of the AP courses and the college courses she was able to take through Middleborough, that is a year of college payments I don't have to pay. And that's an exceptional thing. And so, Paul, I can't say enough how wonderful the high school is. I know as, as I sit here as the chair of the school committee, I, I am somewhat required to be the biggest cheerleader for the school system, but I'll go over and above anytime for Middleborough High School, based on, on my experiences. And so I want to thank you, and I want to thank your entire staff. And Dr. Gates, thank you for building on that and adding more opportunity for those kids who want to see something else and want to do something else. So I really appreciate that. Anything else? Great.
I had to tell my daughter, she was supposed to be doing homework, but I checked on her, and she's like, I'm looking through my program of studies. I mean, it's like, no, you know, she was so excited to, to have that, and, you know, when I was in high school, I don't think, I even knew what I was taking the next year until the teachers told me what I was taking. So to see the wealth of opportunities she has, it's really amazing. So thank you.
Any further, yes, Mr.?
Having looked through this for the first time as a school committee member, I was very impressed, not only with the variety of courses, but the depth of courses, how they can continue on and follow a pathway. And for a school Middleborough size, it is truly incredible, all the different offerings, different pathways they offer students. It was impressive. Well done.
And one other thing I should point out, too, because I think it's really important, and I'm sorry, Mr. McCarthy has left, but next year, we'll mark our graduating class that will have the opportunity for two diplomas, one from Middleborough High School and one a national diploma. And I know Mr. McCarthy's in that program, and I, you know, I don't know if we get to give him two diplomas twice, or what we get to do, Paul, but we really look forward to that. We have a large contingent of kids who are going to do that, and that's just, you know, we're one of the few high schools in the state of Massachusetts to offer that. And so, again, kudos to you and your staff, because that's fantastic. The motion on the table to approve the program of studies. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, and thank you for that approval, that stamp of approval for a very comprehensive program tonight. Our next item on the agenda from my report is the Middleborough High School Scholarship booklet. It is a 25-page comprehensive booklet that details scholarships available to graduating seniors and alumni, and upwards of a couple hundred thousand dollars. And Mr. Brannigan is going to speak briefly of that. As you know, as a school committee, we will annually approve this booklet. There will be additions to it, as there are additional scholarships made to it, but according to school committee policy, we do, the school committee approves the scholarships that are handed out in the scholarship booklet. So we've, we agreed last year to take the whole booklet as, as a whole and approve of that, and if you have any questions on each individual scholarship, you're welcome to do that. But like I said, there may be additional scholarships that are added to this, and those would come before the board, whether individually or in a group, as we move down the road. So, Mr. Brannigan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lynch. The program is, excuse me, the scholarship booklet that you approved last year, as Mr. Lynch said, was really all of them. And starting this year, what we're bringing before you are the additions to that. And as Mr. Lynch had said, we're still evolving this book, so, because there are still scholarships that we are still finalizing to add to the book. So you'll notice the fact that we may be coming back to you at the next school committee meeting with a few more, that we just kind of keep adding to the book. I do want to commend the Middleborough High School Guidance Department for really taking a good look of how we engage the scholarships. You're going to notice a few highlights, if I may. One is that we're starting this process a lot earlier, so the program booklets are going to be going out in early February, pending your approval. It is a document that is going to be due the end of March. It has usually in the past been due much later into the spring. But we did some research with other schools and their timelines of scholarships, and what they found is that the earlier you get it out, it gives families and seniors February vacation to potentially do some of that work. When you pass it out the beginning of March, there's no timeframe during that month of March into April to do that. So getting it out to the, to the sponsors also earlier allows for their turnaround to be a little bit more, not as rushed as sometimes we're asking them to do. So you'll notice the fact that the timeline is that this book will go out pending your approval in probably early February, and then we'll just keep adding the scholarships electronically into the booklet. This is a booklet that will go online for students and families to be able to access. All of the material that they're going to be able to enter, for any family who's done the scholarships in the past, you're constantly writing the same application over and over again with just different titles. What we've done now is that everything is now in the portal. So when they go in, it's a type of, it's a, you can type right into the document. And all you simply need to do is, for information that tends to be repetitive, in terms of some information that every scholarship needs, you can simply just change the titles, you'll print them, and you're still going to be handing in hard copies of everything, but it's not the hours upon hours of handwriting all of the documents that we needed to do before. There's also, in many cases, scholarships are asking for the biographical sheet that our students have done, and many times that they don't know that that autobiographical sheet that they've done is really a document you can be adding to it. And you'll notice in this booklet, there's a, there's a student activities page that every senior has already done. If they've applied for any colleges thus far, that activity sheet has to be part of their, their college application process. That is now a document that is in here, that the students can either regenerate, update it, again, print it, add it to the application. So it's really going to make the entire experience, even for our seniors and their families, a lot easier as well. So we're really excited by that. The highlighted, the scholarships that you see in your, in your booklet that you've received electronically, they were highlighted, are the ones that are the new ones that you'd be, I'd be asking for your approval tonight. And if I may, if I can just bring those to you. One is the William M. Trukey Senior Memorial Scholarship. You will, that was a scholarship that we received late last year, so there was not a recipient of that. There is no criteria for that award. Basically, the foundation or the scholarship asks that the high school chooses a student that's deserving. So there's no formal criteria. That's the reason why you're going to notice, there's no kind of, kind of text to it as well. Any student can apply for it as well. You'll notice the fact that there are three new Oak Point Homeowners Association scholarships, which we're so very excited by. The unbelievable generosity of the, of the Oak Point community has been tremendous to our school over the years. And in the fall, we met with the scholarship committee, because there were some changes they wanted to be making in their programming. They had residents coming forward to say, we kind of want to do something, but a little bit different. We really want to make sure that if we're giving a scholarship, we want to make sure it's going toward... we want to make sure it's going towards a certain career path potentially, maybe a student who's going more into a technical field rather than maybe the traditional full-year college experience." So, you'll notice that there are three scholarships that we're adding to the overall unbelievable generosity of Oak Point. One of them is the Oak Point Homeowners Association Scholarship in the name of Bill and Cindy Seklinger Award. And that is somebody who is in the class of 2018, who has been examples to service in the community, and they must be attending a two or four-year accredited college next year. And so, they wanted to make sure that some of these families, or some of these community members wanted to really give their own scholarship, but they're under the umbrella of Oak Point. The other one is the Oak Point Homeowners Association Scholarship donated by Tim and Nancy Hollick, owners of Wood Palace Kitchens. And that is for any student going on to a two or four-year accredited college, in really making sure the fact that it is in their name, and it will be announced at graduation in that name of that scholarship. And then you'll also notice the fact, the Oak Point Homeowners Association Scholarship in memory of Sean Emmett Simon. And this is the scholarship that is named for a student who potentially would be going on to a more technical experience at post-graduation as well. So, those are the four scholarships that are new for this part. But I think it'd be important, because there's also the other part of this document, which is the Dollars for Scholars, scholarships that are being added as well. And again, if you'd be so kind to let me invite Melanie Gates down as the chairperson for Dollars for Scholars, just to announce which scholarships are being added for that part of the program booklet.
Mr. Chair, if I could, before Dr. Gates sits down again, I wanted to mention that the Bill and Cindy Seklinger Awards are, they are the owners of Muckey Liquors. So, there are also community members, and, but they do own Muckey's Liquors. And Tim Hollick is the Wood Palace Kitchens, which you did mention, so.
Thank you for having me back again. As a representative of Middleborough Dollars for Scholars, with great pride that we announced that we've added four new scholarships for this year. They are as follows. The first is the Middleborough High School Class of 1968 Memorial Scholarship. This is a scholarship that will go to a student that is, falls between the 60th and 90th percentile in their graduating class. They did not want to choose from the top 10%, because they feel that that's a population that tends to get a lot of recognition. So, they wanted to choose a student that is making strides academically, but could use a boost to help them pursue their post-secondary aspirations. And that's in honor of their 50th class reunion. Next, I'm excited to announce the Eleanor Osborne Speech and Theater Scholarship. If you do not know, Mrs. Osborne was a longtime English teacher at Middleborough High School. And she founded the Speech and Theater Workshop Program, I believe, in 1978. And through Mrs. Osborne's dedication to that program, it's able to achieve the status that it is today, where we actually have a full-fledged theater program as part of our curriculum, as well as a robust opportunity after-school for our students as well. And it's just great that we're able to honor Mrs. Osborne. I spoke to her on the phone back last spring, and she was very humbled by this opportunity. And we felt that it was not only to honor Mrs. Osborne, but to recognize an important population in our school and do so through this scholarship opportunity. Next, we have the John R. Hilsabek Jr. Television Production Scholarship. And similarly, Mr. Hilsabek, he gives his full blessings for us to honor him in such a way. Mr. Hilsabek was a phenomenal history teacher, as well as the visionary and creator of our current television production program. And without Mr. Hilsabek, we wouldn't have the program, and we wouldn't have the facility that we, to house the program that we do here at the middle school. So, we felt it was important to honor Mr. Hilsabek and award this to students that I think give a lot to our community, as demonstrated here by our students back in the booth and back running the board that are here for every meeting and for so many other after-school events. This scholarship will go to a student who's participated in all four years of TV pro, with the support of Mr. Pelletier. We crafted the language for this scholarship. And it is going to be open to graduating seniors, as well as any student that is in their first, second, or third year of their undergraduate program. Students would need to be majoring in some field related to television production, whether it's documentary production, film production, communications, radio and media production, and the like. And then lastly, we have the Scott Nellie Nelson Memorial Scholarship. That will go to, excuse me.
That will go to a graduating senior who has, and they're still in the design phase of really what that scholarship will be. But we believe it's going to be for a student who is going into some aspect of science, but also some aspect of really the things that Nellie loved in school, his science and his athletics. So, there'll be a combination of that. So, that is a scholarship that will be coming forward as well. In the case of those scholarships, as well as some that we're still waiting to hear back from their foundations or those families, that there are scholarships that we're still waiting on to see whether or not they're offering them this year. So, they're in the program, they're in the scholarship booklet, but that's why this will be a booklet that will be constantly be updating. As if a family or a foundation decides they're not going to be offering it this year, we can very easily just remove it for the, for this year and then potentially put it back in again, because it's been one that you've already approved. And we'll be keeping you updated on those updates of that book as we evolve over the next few weeks.
Now that I've been able to collect my motions, the Middleborough Dollars for Scholars scholarships are not submitted through paper copy. They're submitted electronically through our portal. And you can find us online, on Facebook, on Twitter, to gain access to our portal. So, it helps to streamline the process and reduce paper, which is always a good thing. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, please.
Could we take a motion? I'd like to move that we approve the Middleborough High School Scholarship Booklet for 2018 as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. The one thing I would like to point out that I think is important is although we have this list of scholarships, staff go out of their way to look for other scholarships. My daughter never had Mr. Nelson, but Mr. Nelson pulled her aside and pulled forth a scholarship that she was eligible for and spent a considerable amount of time with her, making sure she filled it out and was able to apply for it. And I will forever be grateful for Mr. Nelson for that. But that's the kind of thing that continues to go on and people continue to do. And so, I think it's important that the community know that's, these aren't the only things out there. There are lots more out there, and the teachers are fantastic in trying to find opportunities for kids, as is guidance. So. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Please.
Those additional scholarships that Dr. Gates just mentioned were not contained in this booklet tonight. So, do we want to take them as a separate item?
Motion to approve the Dollars for Scholars.
Scholarships?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Other than, Dr. Gates, if somebody in the community wanted to make a donation to Dollars for Scholars, how would they do that?
There are three ways that, well, probably more than three ways. But you can donate by going directly to a Rockland Trust Bank and stating that you would like to make a donation to Middleborough Dollars for Scholars. If you wish it to go to a specific scholarship, just please note it in the memo of the check or make note of it with the teller. They do keep the receipts for us. They tell us if the person wishes to be identified, they write down the name and address. They state, we'll also write down what scholarship that it goes towards. You can also donate online through our website. You can donate through shopping, through Amazon Smile and selecting Middleborough Dollars for Scholars as your charity of choice. You can donate by visiting myself or Mrs. Holmgren, Mr. Brandigan's Administrative Assistant at the high school, who also serves as the Treasurer and Secretary on our Board. And just reach out to any of our Board members, and we'd be happy to help facilitate any donations that anyone would like to make. In addition to making donations, we certainly welcome the opportunity to help organizations or families to create scholarships. We try to make it as seamless as possible for families, and we take care of being able to manage the scholarship and all of the corresponding paperwork with it. So, we're happy to do that for any community members as well. We've increased our scholarship opportunities over the last two years. We started, in my role here in the Board, we started with seven scholarships, and we're now up to 14. So, we're looking to grow more, to be able to provide more financial support for our students, because as many of you know, college is just getting more and more expensive. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might, before you go, you mentioned March 30th is a big date, and it's a date that's been pushed up this year. But it's also a date for Dollars for Scholars, correct? It's March 30th is that deadline. Now, there's also Section 3 of this booklet, which contains special scholarships, and those dates vary. So, students really, and parents out there, really need to pay attention to this book. Read through the book. Don't immediately think that the March 30th is for all the scholarships, but there are special instructions in each scholarship. There's an abstract of each scholarship in the booklet. Please read it and follow those directions. And there are also post-re requirements. For example, at Oak Point, once they provide a scholarship, they like to have the students come back and then have a reception. I think this year it's on June 6th, 2018, at the Ballroom at Oak Point. But they like to celebrate their students also. So, there are a lot of specific, special asks in each scholarship, and that is something that people need to pay attention to, especially students and their parents' guardians.
That's right. And also, just to make sure that we update this, that the date of March 30th is actually a no-school day, because it is Good Friday. We realized that today. So, we moved it to March 29th. So, when the final book that will go out, it will be March 29th. So, we caught the mistake today. And this is, the only people who've seen this book is obviously yourselves. So, it will be updated. It will be, the deadline is March 20, March 29th. But also, keep in mind, as Mr. Lynch said, the, those special due dates for some of those scholarships that are not within that, those first tiers.
Paul, this will go online, correct?
It will, yeah.
And one thing that we should mention to the community is, some of these scholarships don't just apply to Middleborough High School students. They apply to Middleborough residents. For example, the Mitchell Club gives out scholarships as long as a parent or grandparent is a member of the Mitchell Club. So, any member of Middleborough or some surrounding towns can be a part of that too.
And the Elks, same way, and a number of different, that's what I meant by those special scholarships. Really pay attention to some of those, because they are pretty specific. Generous, but specific.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, as we move on this evening, I wanted you to know, and I think most folks in the community are really in tune with this, but as you know, Middleborough has now been designated as a green community. And as such, we are eligible for a number of funds. And the first one is an initial grant of $197,655 to our community. We, as a school department, myself, Mrs. Pietelli, and Mr. Hutchinson have met with Seth Pickering, who's the Regional Director of the Department of Energy Resources. And he is helping us along. In fact, we're meeting him tomorrow. It's 9:00 a.m., but as he calls it, "Oh, 900", and we'll be meeting with him to discuss the application process and how we go further. We've done Level 1 audits and Level 2 audits, and we're completing those as we go, as we speak. I've been informed by the Chairman, oh, excuse me, by the Town Manager, that we consume between 75 and 80% of the energy in town. And as such, the whole idea is to reduce our energy with projects. And we're going to be looking at a project at the Berkland and Mayflower Complex, Mary Kay Good Complex, where we're going to try to reduce the energy considerably by changing lights from the F-12 with ballast down to the
LEDs.
LEDs, the LED bulbs. So, that's going to be a major project. But we have been told we're going to get probably approaching $150,000 of that money for projects just related to the Middleborough Public Schools. So, I wanted to inform you of that. Green community designation, if you have attended school, excuse me, town meetings, contentious at times, but it is an effort on part of the town to reduce energy consumption in five years by 20%. With this project at the complex, we anticipate that this is a good chunk of at least maybe, maybe 7% or 8% over the, and almost immediately. So, and it will save on the bills too, because our bills have been extensive. This latest, Mrs. Pietelli was talking this afternoon about the bills for gas and electric just came in with regard to this latest cold spell. And our bill's a little bit higher than usual. So, it is something that we're very proud of. It's something we have worked with Mr. Pickering, and we appreciate that, Seth Pickering. And we'll meet with him again tomorrow. We appreciate the efforts of the Town Manager's Office, Evan Malillo, Andy Sukforth, an intern in the office, and Mr. Nunes himself. So, that is on the docket. Any questions on that? Okay. Thank you for that. Moving on, we have MCAS testing dates coming up. Each, we've asked each principal to set their testing dates, so as to let the parents know exactly when each grade is testing. Parents need, want to be in tune with that, exactly what weeks and dates and such. So, these principals now have set these dates, and they will publish them on their blogs. They will publish them in their newsletters, and they will communicate with their parents through the social media, and so that, let the parents know exactly what dates. Because missing these tests means making them up. Making them up means you're not taking them with your cohort group. Same test, granted, but it is something that is important for us to make sure we have all students, as many students as possible, humanly possible, in attendance on those dates. Obviously, we don't want students who are gravely ill or sick to come to school, but we set these dates in advance so people can plan accordingly. So, those dates will be published in the next coming days, and those principals have designated those schedules. Any questions on that? Hearing none. Thank you. Next on my agenda, or our agenda here, is the FY19 Budget Subcommittee Meetings Updates and Capital Requests, and then we'll move on to the school calendar. So, Mrs. Pietelli has a couple of comments from the Business Office.
Thank you. So, as far as the FY19 Budget Subcommittee, it's comprised of Mr. Young, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Lynch, and myself. We met over December school vacation, on December 27th. We sat down and made our timeline of how we were going to meet with all of the administrators. Over the last two weeks, we've met with all the administrators that have budget responsibilities, principals, directors. We have another meeting scheduled for next Thursday, and we will kind of debrief. The Governor's Budget is due out on Wednesday, the day before, not that, it will give us kind of an idea of where the state funding is going to be. So, next week, we will kind of put together our plan, taking all the requests, and what we assume will be our allocation from the Town Manager to move forward with our budget presentation. We have set February 15th as our public hearing. It will begin at 8:00 p.m. And the information for the, February 15th, the information for the School Committee will be in the Dropbox on the Friday before, it's February 9th. And the notice will be put in the paper February 1st for the 8th to be in time for the 15th. And then our hope is to then go in front of the Board of Selectmen towards the end of February, so that we'll be all ready to go for the town meeting, April 23rd.
We established these dates to meet sort of the outline of what the town was doing. As you know, in the past, we've sort of maybe pushed things out later, with the town understanding that. But it made sense to try to fall within the guidelines, so everybody was on the same page. And that would fall well within those guidelines. So, things are a little earlier this year, but I would also add that we started early. We started getting things done earlier.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are we working from a number that the Town Manager said, "Hey, this is what we're thinking," or are we waiting? We're still just pulling all the information in?
Right now, we are just listening to requests, asking questions. And then next Thursday, we'll, I guess, as a committee, make a decision of, you know, if we're offered as an allocation X amount of dollars, but we really need that plus some, that will be, I guess, what we will discuss.
And we'll have further discussions. But what I'd like the Board to know, and I think is important is this, as we've discussed about the current calendar year, we had large portions of new special ed that came in after, that caused a huge disruption in our budget. In looking at the numbers with Kathy, I don't think there's any way we can make up that number. So, I really believe, if you think about it, there's always a special before the town meeting. We're probably going to have to go to the special and ask for additional dollars to fund the shortage in special ed. We haven't done that in my entire time on the School Committee, which is four years, and
Before that.
Before that, Brian, it's been a while. And so, we have always lived within our budget. I just think that when you have these large changes that we have no control over and not able to do, we can't cut $200,000 out of our budget for these, you know, these things. Kathy is doing everything possible to save every nickel and dime and move it, and she will continue to do so. But I want the committee to know, I believe we're going to have to ask for additional funds.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I also believe that over the past few years I also believe that over the past few years, where we've had a couple of mild winters, we've been able to, because we haven't used all that, the heat budget, we've been purchasing our own vans at times. We, we put in for capital, they've approved it. But instead of them spending capital money out of the general government, we've been fortunate enough to fund it out of what we have remaining out of this year's after paying some of our special ed prepay that we were able to do. And, and I think that the town understands that. In fact, I think the town has seen that, even at town meeting, when we table something. I think they're appreciative of it, the people that go attend town meeting. And at times, I, I would have to say 2008 or '09 was the last time we asked for money to help supplement the special ed.
I didn't get here until 2010, so I can't.
And that's, I, I just, I remember, I remember.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was at special, unfortunately. Just one of those things.
That's great, then. That's 10 years.
The other thing too, that I might add too, is for the past couple of years that I've been on the committee, we have had a surplus in special education transportation that we've been able to move over. As we know, this year, we negotiated a new contract. The, the fees went higher. So I don't believe we will have that additional money that we've had in the past either. So, you know, this is sort of a time that's come up, that's been problematic for us. And again, most, this took place after the beginning of the fiscal year. So it's not, to her credit, Kathy and Brian have done everything they can to sort of put holds on things and say, okay, let's look at this. But you can't juggle half a million dollars. I mean, and she's, they're doing the best they can. So I, I just want the committee to know that.
We did freeze through you, Mr. Chair. We did freeze non-essential spending on October 6th. So, I mean, it, it started way back when we realized that we were going to have an issue with a couple of students that moved in that were, had significant special ed tuition costs.
Mr. Chair, when we say non-essential, we're not talking about wasteful spending. We're talking about other things. The things that aren't heat, electric, things like that.
We also will be applying for the circuit breaker relief in February, which I believe we have hit the marker. So we should get something from that as well. We'll know February, March.
Extraordinary one?
The extraordinary relief, yes. Extraordinary relief. Which, but we would still need to go back to the special town meeting.
Which means, which means we have a lot.
We do.
And they're going to give us a little piece, maybe.
Absolutely.
I would also add that extraordinary funding is not funded at the level it's supposed to be funded at.
Circuit breaker in itself, correct.
I believe last year was 68%. And, and because of the revenues, the higher the numbers, revenues, at the end of the year, the governor has been a little bit more generous in terms of where the money is going. And I believe that we're, hopefully, we'll get up to 78%, which is the highest it's been funded. Should be 100%, but at 78%, certainly that's, that's a couple hundred, well, $20,000.
And hopefully, we'll do well this year because it's an election year.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Even if they fund 100%, it's not 100% of special ed. It's everything beyond $42,000, $43,000 that you spend on a student. So it's, I had that argument with the governor one night specifically when he said, oh, we funded. I said, no, you don't. It's, you fund beyond three times, or whatever the num, magic number, four times, yeah. Four times the magic number. And he finally, he finally conceded. Reluctantly, but he conceded because it's just numbers. $42,000, $43,000 is a lot to come up with before you ask for help.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So as I said, next week, we'll be meeting to kind of debrief, hopefully have some idea from the town manager where our numbers are going to be. But at least we'll know where the governor's at. If anyone has any questions on the process? I'll move into capital, and I apologize. I have capital requests all printed out, and I didn't give them to Ann to share with you, but I will do that tomorrow. I did send them over to the town manager, and he did include them in the book. They had their first meeting on Tuesday night for the Capital Planning Committee to map out their schedule. What we requested was for technology, requested money for, to replace our infrastructure as well as some devices. It would be great if we got it all, but I don't anticipate much, but you have to ask. We also requested a special ed van with a wheelchair lift, which is not a bus, it's not a yellow bus, and it's bigger than a regular caravan. It has, we have one, it's a Transit, and it has the wheelchair capability. This allows our 7D drivers, we have CDL drivers, who can only drive, who can drive everything. And then we have 7D drivers who can only drive vans. But a 7D driver can drive a wheelchair van, so it gives us more flexibility. And we also requested funds to resurface and reline the parking lots at the complex, the front and the back. We redo the whole parking lot. We've been patching and piecing things together. So we're looking, Mr. Hutchinson is working on getting prices from different companies and talking to the DPW director to see how they went about the town hall parking lot that they did recently, just to see. It's something that needs to be done completely instead of patching.
Are you talking about ripping up completely and then relaying down new asphalt? Or just, you know, resurface, put a new layer on top?
I think you'd like to redo the whole thing, because we've been patching, I know, for like 10 years, so.
As, as he, Mr. Hutchinson describes, at many different levels back there. He's, he wants to try to make it level for, for purposes of snow plowing. He, he said that the Mokwin excavating does an awesome job. Luckily, he knows our back parking lot very well, knows where the holes are, or the tubes are. He's done a nice job, so.
Parts, he said that the company couldn't patch parts of it because of the
Beyond.
Beyond.
Beyond repair.
Yeah.
So it has to.
One of the things that we did ask him to do was, we asked him to look and see if he could do it in phases. So there'd be, you know, maybe we can just do the back this year, or the front, you know, whatever he. I, I think the backs.
His, the back is bad.
And as we know, for anyone who's ever done pickup in that time, that's a tough, that's a tough run.
Our last request was lined up with the green communities to replace the lights over at the complex. As Mr. Lynch said, we've done the Level 2 ASHA audit, and that report should be in soon. We're working with that company to help us put together the bid. Mr. Noons has said that we would get probably about $150,000 for that project, but we still submitted it through capital, just to be transparent, I guess.
Well, I believe the process that Mr. Noons has outlined is that the Capital Planning Committee will be the group that's going to make recommendations with regard to the spending of the green community money.
And the other thing that we were told, which I think is important for the committee to know, is that we are, clearly, we have to use the green community money for green projects. But you also want to use the green, the projects to show savings so you can piggyback it for additional funds. One of the things we were told, for example, was you shouldn't use green funds for, for solar projects because by the time the next audit comes up, those solar projects will technically be out of compliance because the technology is changing so quickly, and you can't count those. So that's why we looked at a project like the, the light project in the complex.
And that's all I have on the capital requests. I will put those in the Dropbox tomorrow. I apologize.
Mr. Chair, my next item is the 2018, 2019 school calendar. You had two options that were loaded in and dropped in the Dropbox with regard to possibilities. And one is the calendar that we discussed at our last meeting. And the second is a calendar that was dropped in subsequent to the Secretary of State, Bill Galvin's announcement that the elections, statewide elections, would be held on September 4th and November 6th. I believe that was the date. And what he has, well, recommended basically, we have a high school that is our, our major polling place in town, not the only polling place in town. There are two precincts that vote at the South Middleborough Fire Station and one at Oak Point. But the majority of the other four precincts, three precincts, are at the high school. And that would be our first day of school. And so the calendar before you outlines an option that we have that day as part of a, we have our three professional development days on August 29th, 28th, 29th, and 30th. And then we have that Friday off, and we also have the Monday and Tuesday off. So that that weekend is Labor Day weekend, is actually a five-day weekend, and that we begin on Wednesday, the 5th, the first day of school. So the Tuesday after Labor Day would be the election day, and the school would be open as a primary or as a voting place, but would not be open. The offices would be open, but would not be open as a school for, for, for. And our, our calendar's 184 days. The November 6th date, if we decide to do that, which is also outlined in the calendar there, Option 2, is also a day because that's, that's second election day. And that also affects our calendar, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
As I, as I think about this, this Commonwealth and how we set up our voting days and how we went around, the reason why the voting days, as we discussed earlier before the meeting, is because they're trying to avoid two holidays, two religious holidays. And I understand that. Although Congress shall make no law the First Amendment, we shouldn't be doing anything with regards with religion in, but anyway. I, I think about it, and I say to myself, why don't we just extend, change our, make it so that we could actually have our primaries a little earlier? I mean, I think there's one in March in one state. But I looked at the calendar, and I, I said, the draft two, the Option 2, moving the January full day that we had this year over to that November, a full election day as well. It just makes sense. Makes common sense to do that. Because when you open up your schools to election, you open it up to every registered voter, regardless of any reason why they shouldn't be in that school. Although we have great security and police department there, et cetera. You, I always worry about that when things are going on, knock on wood. The only question I would have is, would you use that Tuesday for something else? Would you move one of those professional days down? I, I just didn't know if that was something that was considered. So you have a professional day on that day, and maybe you only have two. It may mess up, because at least if you're going to mess up one week, you'd have a really long weekend as a, I'm not one coming in, it's the teachers that would come in. But I didn't know if that was something you considered.
Well, it's either that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday before, and go with the sort of five-day weekend, the longer weekend, or go with a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of that week, and then go with a four-day weekend. Or go with a Thursday, Friday, and then the Tuesday. So, but we chose to go, as a group, sort of putting this forward when we're setting the agenda, saying, if we put that three block together for the teacher, 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 and get that professional development in those three blocks. Because a lot of presenters that might come in were more in tune. If you block out those days, that block, not available the next week, or I'm not, you know, not there. But if we, the, the first day of school, obviously, is, to me, is, is, I'm not going to call it a no-brainer, but to have Election Day on that, and our first day of school on that September 4th is, to me, is, is a no. So as far as the rest of it is, I, I would move to, I would go to whatever the, the school committee declares here this evening or, or votes on.
And we spent a lot of time talking about this. One of the things I should say is, two years ago, we made the decision, Brian, and I know both Greg's weren't on the board at that time. We made the decision to take Election Day off. We actually didn't take Primary Day off. But where Primary Day fell on the first day of school, and you really have some students driving for the first time to school, it didn't make sense to us. And it just, you know, it, especially the first day of school, and we've talked about this, especially with the building. What am I going to say to people, you can't bring kids, you can't bring cars the first day, jump on the, you know what I mean? It was too much. And it just made sense if we were going to give Election Day off to give Primary Day off. And then again, it made sense to keep the professional development days together and then to extend the long weekend. So Option 2 made more sense to me in the long run. And I think, you know, that would, that makes sense. And, you know, again, we're, we're giving, I think we're giving parents plenty of time. Brian?
One other question I had was, we mentioned at the last meeting, can we add that first day of practice? Fall practice, MIA practice? You're only allowed a certain period, that first day of practice, you know, so we can have that. Maybe a, a date in August that was the first day that coaches can call practice?
I think it's the week before.
If we can.
If we can put it on the calendar.
If we can put it on the calendar?
That's what Brian was.
Yeah, if we can do that, put it on the calendar.
That makes excellent sense. Yep. Whatever that is to parents now.
I don't know if we can find a color for, but we, yeah.
Greg, did you have a question?
Orange.
This is Steve. When does that Start Strong program run? Is that the same week before PD?
He runs that in, I believe, the week before, or, or even the 14, 15, 16 or so of August. Yeah, it is before.
Yeah, I, I wholeheartedly agree with the first day of school. I mean, there's, why add chaos to chaos? I mean, it's, you know, I mean, not that, not that, you know, I'm sure everything's planned out, but first day of school is really, your buses are running, they're figuring out their routes, how many kids they have, they're going to be early, late. You know, why add all that traffic to the, to the mix? It makes absolute sense to me to, to Option 2 for that Wednesday start.
And Chair, I want to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move that we, I would move that we would approve the Middleborough Public Schools 2018, 2019 school calendar, the Option 2 of draft, January 12th, 2018, presented this evening.
Very second.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to reiterate, just to reiterate, the first day of school for students under this calendar will be September 5th, 2018. And the last day of school would be June 18th, 2019.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
With notation of the first day of sports.
I would like to point out to the committee, which I think is important, in having this discussion about this particular calendar, we began looking at the 2019, 2020 calendar. And what I wanted to tell the committee was, that is important for two major reasons that the committee needs to know about. First and foremost being, in January of 2020, we will move into a new high school. The second being
Twenty-one.
That
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty-one, oh, sorry, you've got another year then. We've, we've been having this discuss, so it's not that year, it's the year after.
Twenty-one.
So, yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm one ahead of myself.
We had the right, we had the right year we were looking at, so.
Right, we were looking at it, and it, and in two years, we may have to go before, that's when there's a late September Labor Day. So we may have to go before Labor Day. And in theory, we could work it out so there's two weeks of Christmas vacation. That would allow facilities to be able to do things and give us plenty of time to move into the new building.
Would you potentially be looking at adjusting those professional development days at the front end?
As part of the discussion, that we take those two or three days so that, especially at the high school level, when you move into a new building, I'm sure Mr. Coutina would agree, and they would have to learn the building also. They'd have to learn the technology of the building, the security of the building. They'd have to learn the building itself and walk around and do tours of the building itself so they know where the music department is, they know where the black box is, they know where the stage is, they know where the gym is, they know where their rooms are. So there's a lot of, of getting to know you, if you will. And, and if we could take those professional development days and put those like the 20, 21st, 22nd, and so, before the, the actual holiday, giving students that time off and moving those three professional development days. But that'll be a discussion that I, I believe, at that point, when we get into planning that time, that'll be, we'll be probably talking with the Teachers Association and talking with administration and looking at what's the best way to go. And talking with, quite frankly, the designers of the building and say, what's, what's, what has been done in the past and what might you recommend? So there'll be lots of discussions about that upcoming.
Mr. Chair, I know, I know, we, we discussed at the building committee, we, we talked about how fast can they move a building? And they were jo, they were jokingly said, well, fast, well, how fast is that? Within a week, they can, they bring these professionals, and they move because a lot of stuff doesn't move. A lot of stuff does, but a lot of stuff doesn't. But they are professionals, and they bring in the professional movers, and boom, they just, they come in, pick, move. Unbelievable.
Looking forward to that. And, and Mr. Chair, that completes my report.
For MSBA update, the one thing that I wanted everyone to know about is, there's a transition meeting. We move into a different phase with the MSBA, and they assign us a new group. We are actually meeting with that group tomorrow at 2:00 in Boston, right?
It's on my calendar, 1:00.
Yeah.
It's a day in Boston tomorrow.
But we'll have two hours to get in and, on a Friday afternoon in Boston.
Friday afternoon. Friday afternoon.
Getting out should be fun.
Yeah, it should be a blast. So I just wanted people to know that. We continue to work on the school, and we continue to get it ready, and we're going to keep moving forward.
And we'll certainly report back on that transition meeting. We know what to expect. It's basically an introduction to that next team of MSBA's. We've been working with one team up until this point. Now we move to that next team, that building team, that design development phase team that's going to help us walk through this next phase. We have a big report due on March 25th, and if you'd like an update on the entire project as to where it's at, please tune into the Middleborough Gazette, whether online or on your paper copy at home. There's an article this week, today's edition of the Middleborough Gazette, indicating a lot of conversation with Rob Deros, your chair, about exactly where we're at with the, with the progress and what people can expect moving forward. So please tune into that.
Thank you. Subcommittee assignments, as I said to the committee before we started, they'll be emailed to everybody this weekend.
Did we, did we take the vote on the motion on the calendar?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
My bad.
Next item on our agenda is consent agenda.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair? Motion to approve the consent agenda is presented this evening.
Do I second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The other action item that we have is surplus media television production equipment.
Do we have that list?
Is it in there?
I didn't see that.
I didn't see the list.
We will place it on the next agenda. I apologize for that, that certainly should be in there.
Thank you. That's all I have. Does anyone have anything else they wish to bring up at this time? Then our next meeting will be Thursday, February 1st, 2018, and the Chair wants to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all of the papers say aye?
Aye.